A little bit, yeah. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the hearings. I'd like to please stand with me and recite the pledge.
I'm Wesley Lee, President of the United States of America and mayor of the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
Thank you. As I said, welcome to the this hearing, which is a is conducted by the Sterling Water Control Authority. I'd like you to do the announcement of that mission. And that will be Jack Jodlin, B. Rabbit, and Neil Delmonico, and myself, I'm Link Cooper. The we've been in the process of trying to improve the water system that we have in town. And it's been a lengthy project up to date, probably taken just about a year at this point, all done behind the scenes with help from a number of different agencies, different people. One of whom is with us tonight, this Matt Cassidy from RCAP, which stands for, I even have a cheat sheet here that tells you what RCAP stands for. Rural Community Assistance Partnership. And Matt has been absolutely instrumental in getting us through the maze of procedure involved with this thing. And what we've arrived at is a preliminary engineering report. And it's done by a company called Jacobs Engineering. And it provided the money for that was provided by the Environmental Protection Agency. Nothing to date has crossed the town of Sterling one dime. So we've got to cover a lot of ground, we've got a long way to go. But what we've done so far is we made the initial step, come to this point where we were required to have a public hearing. And that's why we're all here. I'm going to ask Judy, Judy Stappo is our treasurer. She's not our treasurer, I tell her that every single time, she's our tax collector. But that means she collects water taxes as well as real estate taxes. And therefore, she's very well acquainted with the water system. And she's helped out with this whole process, and she also takes excellent notes, which I don't. And that's the reason I asked her to jump on board about a year ago, and so she's been integral with this whole situation. I'd like to have Judy make a few remarks about this so far.
Sure. So I think one of the important things to understand is that the preliminary engineering report is just that. When we applied to the drinking water state revolving fund to look for funding, one of the things that they required, we did an application in 2023. But in that application, the engineering report that we had only had two options. We were required by Connecticut to have three options. So that was what this report was designed to do, is to come up with the three options. And we did the application in March, we had done a rollover application in December, then we worked on DPH. In January, then we actually needed to do a full application for 2025, for fiscal, the fiscal year of 2026. Which included, one of the big things is the preliminary engineering report. Through Matt's help, we were able to connect with the EPA. And EPA had federal funding to pay for the engineering study. And with that, we had an option to use a local engineer. But they had to be approved by the EPA, or we could use one of the EPA provided for us. We did reach out to engineers and they didn't have the expertise to do what we're doing, so we went with Jacobs, who has put together the engineering report. The three options, they're going to go over those. And I know just from different comments that we've been hearing, you know, the expense of what we have to do. It's a lot of money for a small population. The biggest issue is the manganese in the drinking water, because from a state level, it far exceeds what's the maximum allowable for not taking any action. I hear complaints from people about the quality of the water. Safety wise, it's safe. But it can be discolored frequently. Laundry can be an issue, drinking, it doesn't look very good. I'm also a resident of Sterling, I have a private well that has high manganese and high iron. So it's it's not just this location, it's prevalent throughout Sterling. Our next steps, we have to get different permits through the town. So we have to get a building permit, we have to go through inland wetlands, we have to go to zoning with a site permit, just to do any structures that we do. We'll also have to vet whatever companies are working for us on this, because it would potentially be state and federally funded. So you have to follow all of their guidelines. So it's not that we can just put something out to bid quickly. We have to vet who we're going to get bids from before we can do anything. So if anybody is not familiar with the water system, it's basically Sterling Village, some up of Turp Street up to the Ravel Bay. Main Street up to Forest Club, Sterling Hills Development, and then along Main Street and up into industrial park. So that's the primary areas of the water system. To the school. Oh, correct, right to the school, right. On the other side of Long Hill, to the school, because the school's on the water system. So next step for us after we do this, this is the preliminary report, so there will be some changes made to the report, and then the town has to sign off on it, and the engineers have to sign off on it, because there's some of the permissions that are not here. One of the other things that came up from a couple of questions is, there were 2020 water studies, there were also studies done in 2025. And that has been updated on Matt's line. You're still high manganese, you're still fighting iron in primary wells that we use. We now have 117 water meters in place. If the industrial park were to expand at some point, that would be on the water as well. And there's a little over 300 people that are currently served by the water system. We're going to look into different brands, there's a distressed community brand, there's emerging contaminants brand, and those contaminants are iron and manganese. It's not chemical, it's naturally permanent. So it's going to still be a pretty long process that we have to go through. So anything else you want to cover?
I think you've done pretty well, thank you. Matt, if you could take it from here?
All right. So we do have a couple of people that may be calling in and sharing, and so we did have somebody from USDA. If they are on, try to raise your hand, if we don't recognize you, we will bring you in. We've had some technical difficulties, so I apologize for that. If they do come in, we'll definitely have them speak. So I can mention some of this, this was some sections that the EPA was going to cover. I'll do my intro first and we'll be back to that. So thanks, everybody, for being here, thanks, Link and Judy, for the intro. My name's Matt Cassidy, I'm from RCAP, RCAP Solutions, technically the area in purple. I'm part of RCAP, which has six sister organizations. And so all the different grouping of states, RCAP Solutions is New England, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Puerto Rico, and the Virgin Islands, excuse me, as I admit somebody. And so we're a nonprofit technical assistance provider, and we're going to talk about more technical assistance, because that's been something very important, very crucial to this project. I get paid by federal grants, EPA, USDA, HHS. And I get the opportunity to help you guys at no cost. So the whole time that we've been working together, no cost from from my organization. And then there's other people that I work with that also bring all the help and expertise. So RCAP does drinking water and wastewater marketing, is helping out small communities with drinking water and wastewater issues, help with funding as well as regulations. So a lot of things that you deal with, but just to let you know, that's us, and I appreciate that. So a little acknowledgement, because I get paid for from the EPA, we often let people know there's a acknowledgement. So the project and anything that I do, and say if I say trade names or anything, it's not directly supported by the EPA. Even though they do support the individuals that do, so that's just our acknowledgement. So back on the collaborative partners, we mentioned a little bit, and I think it's super important to really focus on the amount of technical assistance that's been working in the background. We often think about things that go behind, you know, doors, and we wonder what what certain fundings are being supported. And so EPA Water TA is a newer aspect, and so I can go back to these slides. So I'll just read, enhances water TA programs with no cost supplemental engineering resources. And so that's exactly what we're talking about with the PER that we're looking at. Through the Water TA, we've gotten engineer services and produced this report at no cost. So that's all through that. Helps communities identify needs, conduct preliminary project planning, produce the engineered documents for federal water infrastructure funding. Also fills a need identified by states, so addresses a frequent funding barrier. And it's something that I have experienced a lot, I've worked in the water field since 2001. And the funding barrier for small communities has always been present, especially an engineering barrier. When I say engineering barrier, it's quite a difficult thing for small communities to engage in engineer firms. A lot of engineer firms don't work with small entities, and so there's a disconnect there. So you want to be able to work with a firm that's going to be eager to work with your unique needs. And there's a myriad of other variables that small systems have to deal with when they're just looking at engineering. And so part of this Water TA was providing that leg of of support. And so there's been a lot of good engineering part of this. So anyway, goals, we can project the eligibility for SRF and set aside, and we can support with those funding applications, which has been going on this time. And we also can give priorities in that area as well, when we go through and find all these unique needs and stuff. So that's part of Water TA, again, something newer, but it's all free technical assistance. Water TA can address additional challenges, and so these are a number of additional things, not just the unique PER that we're talking here, but they cover an array of different things, from asset management to emerging contaminants, which we talked a lot about. Removing lead pipes, I'm sure we're all familiar with some of the lead and copper rules that have come out, and things that we've had to do in the last year or so. So anyway, there's a lot of resources, a lot of help through the Water TA. And then I mentioned, obviously, RCAP and some of that network. And so various TA, lots of different types of acronyms, very confusing. Just remember, we're free, we're no cost, rather. So anyway, I talked about some of those collaborative partners, so EPA TA, as well as the EPA, have been very helpful. RCAP is obviously me, and whoever comes with with me, sometimes it's mostly been me on this project. But I have many colleagues that can offer different other types of services to help out communities. And so making the TA umbrella even bigger is the New England Environmental Finance Center, the EFC. That's another funding arm of the EPA and how they use different groups, different TA providers, nonprofits, to help out communities. And so there's different avenues, there's types of engineering, there's financial assistance through that as well, looking at budgets. There's all kinds of different things to get into, because the the network is so broad, it's very tough to lay, you know, a list that's really concise. But we're a group that works together, and once we start interacting with the community, we start talking to each other to see who's best to serve and where we can concentrate. And so the those first sets of of groups have been working since, I want to say, last September is when things started. And we started meeting, and then more frequently, and then by the time, you know, February came around, we were meeting almost every couple of weeks. And we'll get into some of that timeline later on, as I have a slide for that. But just want to recognize all the people that have been involved so far. And outside of the town of Sterling staff, Sterling hasn't paid for any of that. And so huge, huge tip of the hat to this whole process and the people involved. So let's get back to the the story at hand, right? We've got a ton of people, a ton of TA, what's going on here? Sterling's water quality challenges. So we know about iron and manganese. I won't get into too many details, I want to allow time for some of this to kind of be absorbed. We're going to have some more information, we have guidance, and we can have a conversation later on, too, for some specifics. But there are elevated iron and manganese levels everywhere. We have testing that supports that, and we also have testing that supports that it's increasing over time and not decreasing. There has been efforts to reduce it at the source with different types of redevelopment. And even though that might show some significance in the short run, still, over time, those levels have continually increased. And so what's that mean? There's been discolored water, and it's impacted a lot of different homes. Nobody wants to pour a glass of water and and see like it looks like Gatorade or something, you know? That really takes away from the public trust, it takes away from that community aspect. And so even though we talked about how there might be health concerns, but it's not, you know, it's not a maximum containment level that we're concerned about, we're not putting regulations on this. But we're looking at the data that's available. So we can say same thing to salt, salt's great for us, we need it to live, too much salt is bad. And then for some people, too much salt is really, really bad. And so we're worried about the different types of people that are consuming the water when we're looking at the health aspects. And so we can't really draw lines, but that's where we're approaching, we're looking at the data and saying, we might be concerned here as it is increasing. But overall, the the water quality with the discoloring, that's enough to destroy a community's attitude about the water. You can't raise rates with discolored water, you can't improve the system with discolored water, because no one wants to put into that. And so this is where we're at, we want to raise Sterling up to a level where it can start from ground zero, perhaps, and and now have the kind of quality water that you deserve. So we know that it exceeds thresholds. Now, I say thresholds, it's not a regulatory thing. But when we say thresholds, it's looking at other types of scientific data that might support, yeah, we're concerned about this, too, just like I said with salt. Best management practices, stuff like flushing could be time of the year, could be amount, all that's going into it already, and still, it's not doing what we needed to do. It's not taking care of the issue, regardless of all the different actions that are happening. So we obviously know this, right? Why clean drinking water matters. And I just mentioned, the whole community aspect is important, you know, you want to be able to go to any public place, you want to go to the school, and be proud that your kids are going there, and they're drinking the water, and not having to rely on the bottled water program or or some other type of entity. That can come from the town. And so people can be proud of that at some point. So it really does support the community's well-being. And obviously, when we're looking at the water system at that level of service, we can care about the public health, and we're just rejuvenating the the lack of potential waterborne illness as well. So in the PR, if you've looked at it, there's details in there about different alternatives. You know, why are we going with this method to treat the water that we have, why can't we do other things? And so the PR does talk about two specific things. And then there's some other things that there might be consideration for from questions that we did look into. And so before we get into the treatment, the two other considerations were sequestration. And so a little bit of that is is kind of being done in this sense. And so it says, we're not going to take it out, we're just going to cover it, in a sense. So it's a chemical process that inhibits the iron and manganese from oxidizing. So they won't be as eager to turn black or brown as far as the oxidation process, but it's still in there. So it can still precipitate out at some point. So and then it's also technically infeasible. The levels that we are dealing with are just too high for that sequestration process to be feasible. And so we know it's going to continue to increase, so even if we are at a level where, yeah, we can get by, it's going to increase, and all of a sudden, you'll be looking at a different method to treat it other than sequestration. And like I said, why do you want to add more to the water? You're adding a phosphate to the water, and that could potentially add to some more complexities with water chemistry that I won't get into. But if there's any questions regarding that, please bring them forward. The other alternative that we addressed was regionalization. And so is there a water source outside of Sterling that is available to hook into? And the closest one was a Connecticut water supply out of Musso. And so in the PR, they go through different variables and estimates. And so that ended up being too costly, to send pipe for that distance and to account for all the additional measures to get it there, it was much more costly than to deal with the treatment aspect. And so we we are looking at the treatment aspect. There's other questions that may be coming up, and we'll be glad to answer those at the end, but, you know, feel free to absorb some of this. We feel that the treatment plan is the best alternative. Sterling still has a great water supply, you have three wells, you have the volume there, and you don't have a lot of things that other people are facing. You don't have PFOS, you don't have radio neutralized, you know, there's other things that are more costly to take out. Iron and manganese is things that we've been taking out of water for quite a while. Question.
But Matt, we're saying manganese is naturally occurring, and it's continuing to increase naturally, is that what's happening?
The level of manganese and iron that is being tested for in the wells has increased. So and we had samples in 2020, and then between 2020 and 2025, there was a well redevelopment. And so there could be some numbers during that time, but from 2020 to 2025, even with the well redevelopment, all the numbers have increased.
But is it what's in the well or what the well is built with that's creating the levels?
No, there's no manganese in the construction of the well. Manganese is occurring in the source water in the brown, so as the aquifer is transferred through, yeah, thank you for the question. Oh, sorry. Yes. Correct, yeah, and it has to be tested more than once. Yeah, there has to be five months, at least five months in between, so that you can catch, you know, any other trends. A good question.
Are there any other test records going back before 2020?
I imagine, so public water systems are typically tested quarterly. As far as the source water tests, I don't know the frequency, but there will be more numbers available. These numbers that we're using are lab, and so there could be operator notes that, you know, they could have field tests with additional data as well.
These are specific tests for the iron and manganese, there are monthly tests for the quality of the water system, bacteria levels. I don't have a list of everything, but these are specific to determine the iron and the manganese.
Yeah, that's specifically the thing.
Those two?
Before 2020, those?
I I don't know, I'd have to see what happened with records. But anybody that's been on the water system, this is not a new the the issues with the discoloration and the buildup, that's not a new thing. Looking through the minutes from WPCA, it goes back to when Connecticut water managed the system. So that was before 2015.
So this is the recommended solution, oxidation and filtration. I've been in the water field for many years, and this is a very, very common way of dealing with iron and manganese. Green sand filtration, that's a proprietary brand up there, I think it was mentioned in the PR, so I just kind of threw it out there. But it's very cost effective and reliable. I've worked on systems that have used these types of filters, and they work great. Very easy to manage in comparison to more complex ways of treating, but as far as, you know, filtration and dealing with backwash, this is a very common, common method. We'll hopefully have the engineer on later to talk more specifically.
So. Hey Matt, this is Russell Ford, I am here.
Oh, hey. I'm glad that you're off mute, thank you, I'm glad that you're here. I appreciate that. You'll be up shortly. So the timeline up to now, I just expressing the amount of people involved, and and even there's a, you know, a weird quirky thing that happened this year. And so I say December 24th was like the first official meeting, I feel, but we were in contact as early as September 24, talking about a potential water project. And then we started meeting, outlining engineer services and technical assistance in January. Starting to talk about the SRF application process, looking at other different types of services. And then if you all remember, January 31st to March 21st, we had a shutdown for six weeks, it was a cease stop, you know, cease work from a lot of these different funders. And so the funding mechanisms had stopped for some of the members in our group, and all of a sudden, we were kind of skated for a little bit. And so Judy and I kept going and figured this was going to start back up again, it was just a little bit of a time, but six weeks was was long enough to, you know, get concerned about it coming back, but it did come back. Within that amount of time, we submitted our SRF application, that's the eligibility application. It basically is a way of saying, hey, we're thinking about a project, this is what it is, this is, you know, rough outlines. We want to be put on a project priority list and see how we're going to rank. And so the SRF process is lengthy, but there's a way for affordability. There's a way to finance, and there's a way to really utilize the TA assistance. And so those are all the no cost benefits to help this whole process. So hopefully that this will really work out. There was a site visit that happened in April, I wasn't able to make that, but engineers came out and looked at all of the different locations of the water system for the PR, and then in a very short amount of time, by the the end of July, a draft PR was produced. So that whole time, even with the the six week, you know, hiccup and and the different hurdles, this huge, huge, lots of work done, and that's such a short amount of time. So hats off to everybody for getting that done, especially to the engineer firm, they were working especially fast to get that done for us. So what, you know, that timeline was existing without anybody thinking about it, but I just wanted to bring that up to make sure, you know, everybody knows all the different types of effort that's been involved. We're going to be changing to more of the particulars of the PR. So hopefully, Russell, you can see the screen and see I have your first slide up there, and.
I can't see the screen, but so, but I do have the presentation, so if you can put the agenda slide up.
The agenda slide is up.
Okay, so. Excellent, 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 we have to persevere through technol- technical challenges here.
Yes, I appreciate that.
So, but yeah, so the so what we're going to do today, our agenda is relatively straightforward, you know, I think Matt did a great job of explaining the need for the project, so we may not have to go into that. And explaining the existing system, give a little more detail on the alternatives that we considered, he mentioned sequestration, treatment, and then, you know, regionalization. And then what what we like to do is use a non-monetary evaluation based on things that would drive a project, and then we do a cost benefit analysis to look at the actual costs. Then to develop what is the best return on your investment. So some things, you know, when you do these analyses, things may be rated high, but the return on investment is not, and then that helps balance it out, and vice versa. And then that helps balance it out and vice versa. You might have a low cost alternative, but it doesn't meet all your objectives. And so that's why we try to do the cost benefit analysis. We'll talk about recommended alternatives and next steps. If you can go to the next slide. The one that says need for the project.
Yes.
Right. So as Matt mentioned, you know, the, the data, sample data that we had indicated, you know, well, well, one A is the primary well. And from 2020 and 2025, you know, we have elevated iron in the 2025 sample. Uh, we have elevated manganese in both samples. Um, you can see below that the, the federal EPA secondary maximum contaminant level, the SMCL or Secondary Standard for Aesthetics is point three for iron milligrams per liter and or part per million. And for manganese is point oh five milligrams per liter. In Connecticut, the action level, there is a lax level for iron, but action level for manganese is point three milligrams per liter. What that means is when you get above that, you need to do something, you know, it's an aesthetic concern. Uh, it does, you know, it impacts appliances, it impacts visualization, taste of the water, those kind of things. So that was the need for the project to look at how to address the elevated manganese. And then also potentially elevated, elevated iron and the other, the backup wells. So if you go to the next slide, uh, 16, it says need for project continued. The, so the system is able, so historically by flushing the system and doing some, some work, you know, Sterling's been able to at least try to stay ahead of the issues, but that also wastes a lot of water. It's a lot, very labor intensive. And as I indicated before, my iron and manganese, you know, it's a, it's a health, it's a health, it's not really a health effect, it's more of aesthetic issue. But people are looking at that and have been doing research, so that's another thing. So if you go to the existing system, slide, slide 17.
Gotcha.
Thing here. Yeah, so and, and, and this is a, you know, the start, the system has a hundred and ten service connections on the public water supply system. And then the rest of the supplies are on private wells. As I've indicated before, well, one A is the primary source with two and three of the backups. Um, and you know, and, and the backup wells based on redevelopment, they think, you know, um, the separate study that's done not by us that indicated potentially 10 years of life expectancy. Your system is unique, and I'll talk about it in the schematic. You have a 40,000 gallon storage tank. And the distribution system ranges from eight inch to 12 inch diameter to pipe. Uh, the way the system is based on, you know, the piping is primarily dead end and segments. And what happens there, when you have dead ends, you have particles, uh, iron and manganese that settle out. And then when you try to, that's where you have to flush the system. If not, they store up the stuff. If you go to the next slide, which is actually the schematic of the system, started to explain it. Your, your system, the system is very unique as it has, you have three wells. And then you provide chemical injection of, you know, phosphophosphate and chlorine. And then you, you pump to a large storage tank on top of a hill. And then that water flows out of the tank by gravity, which maintains your system pressure because you're pretty high up, maintains, maintains the system pressure. So, so that, that's the unique part of the system. Everybody has a storage tank, but you guys have, uh, the system has one storage tank. Very large storage tank based on your actual demand that you, you have. And I think that's fired because you had existing industry there that utilized the tank and industry is not there anymore. So that's why you have additional storage, which is a good thing. So if you go to the alternatives considered, yeah, I'm going to jump two slides to the alternative one, sequestration, not evaluated.
Gotcha.
All right. So that one, as we indicated, um, it, it can be used. But typically, if you're twice the secondary maximum contaminant level, sequestration is not really effective. It's a chemical situation where you're trying to, lack of a better term, wrap the stuff to, to, to polyphosphate in the water around the iron molecule, so it doesn't come out of solution. But as Matt indicated, at some point it does come out of solution somewhere, but it may not come out of solution in your hot water heater. Or but it may come out of hot solution in your hot water heater, or it may come out in your laundry, or, you know, your appliances and things of those sorts. So, so since we are twice the secondary standard, uh, we did not evaluate sequestration anymore because it's not effective chemically speaking for those systems. Alternative two, next slide, slide 21. So, so this one is what we talked about and ultimately became the recommended solution. But we looked at two different options. Because of, because you have the very large storage tank, we looked at a design floor rate of 350 gallons a minute, which would allow the system to run for about five hours, pumped to the tank. You know, we would use green sand filters, you know, uh, one active, one standby, so you had chemicals up front. You add the chemicals, the iron and manganese are removed in the green sand filter. And over time, you backwash that filter to remove the particles, but then the water comes out and it would pump to the tank. Um, you know, option two is the same alternative, but it looked, we looked at a lower design floor rate in terms of cost, operating facility mark. So the issue is you could run, since you have a large storage tank, you could run at 100 gallons a minute for 18 hours. Or, you know, or you could run 50, 50 gallons a minute for five hours. You know, to get the same treatment, it just depends on the capital construct, construction cost of a different alternatives, given the size of the equipment needed. But that's what those two alternatives are. They're the same treatment, just different capacities and how often Sterling would run those. And, you know, kind of becomes an operations thing. The last alternative, alternative three on slide 22, was regionalization, um, and we looked at bringing a new 12 inch main about 13,000 feet um, to install from Musso to a new booster station. The reason why there's a new booster station is because you still have to get the water to the tank. Because we can't just bring the water into the system from, you know, Connecticut Water. If we did that, then you'd be at their hydraulic grade line. And then the tank that you exist have with the water would not actually be useful and you wouldn't have additional storage. So we put a booster station in to basically push the water to the same hydraulic grade line to meet pressure that you have in the existing system to keep the tank, keep the tank operating. Um, but we, but it would basically be its existing well site. And, and then the, you know, and then the tank, the tank allows you to have emergency source and storage for fire protection, uh, things of those, those issues. So if you go to the next slide, which is the evaluation alternative, non-monetary. You know, thi- thi- this is, this is the subjective part. And so every time we, every time we do this, you know, we, we sat down with Sterling and we talked about the different criteria that we would normally use and we adjusted them. But we use four key criteria, ability to meet current and future regulatory requirements, ease of operation, you know, residual management, because we have to deal with backwashes and sludge and things of that sort. And long-term system operation, like how, how is this going to work long-term? We awaited, developed the weight, the importance of each criteria based on discussions. You know, we did this and we went back, uh, um, you know, with, um, you know, Sterling. And so the weight, you know, so we, we, 40% of the weight was on meeting current and future regs. And then 20% each for the other criteria. We use the scale of one to five, one being the lowest, five being the best, you know, and in between there subjectively. So if you look at those scales, you know, sequestration of the total available points, you can have 240 of those points. Uh, you know, for sequestration, 20 points for filtration and 420 for regionalization. So this is where we talk about doing the cost benefit analysis. You know, from a benefit standpoint, you know, the regionalization alternative provides a lot more flexibility uh, in terms of meeting regs, ease of operation, because you just have to get the water, there's, there's no residuals to deal with, long-term operation. So it does meet more of the alternative, but now if you go to the next slide, which is slide 26, and 20, yeah, 20, well, whatever, whatever it is, alternatives, opinions of probable costs. So we developed the capital costs uh for, for these alternatives. And you can see that essentially the cost for treatment will range somewhere between 3.8 to 4.5 million dollars, depending on which floor rate was chosen for operation. Looking at the filtration system, the chemical feed system, backwash holding tank, additional project costs that add in, you know, um, you know, contracted costs, those kind of things. If you look at the regionalization alternative, um, the, that cost looked at installing, you know, 13,000 feet of pipe um, and a booster pumping station. And so those costs were, range about, call it 10.3, 10.4 million dollars when you look at it. So you're looking at a cost difference between about $6 million difference in cost between the two alternatives. So when you go to the next slide, which is the alternative cost benefit analysis, you can see that the non-monetary score coupled with the construction costs results in um, treatment being the most benefit per cost, which means you're going to, for the, you're going to get the most benefit out of the system for the least amount of cost versus the regionalization alternative, which had a higher benefit score, but also had a higher cost. And so the ratio was ranked third. So that is, you know, that is how we did that and it's very subjective, but I think, you know, we look at the low cost and get the benefits. It's not like the treatment won't meet requirements. It's just, you know, regionalization had a better overall system operation, but the capital cost is substantially higher. So if you go to the recommended alternative, you know, slide, we recommended alternative two treatment, operating at 100 gallons a minute um for a longer period of time during the course of the day, turning it off when needed. It had the lowest construction cost and capital cost and had the highest benefit cost result. Um, so, you know, if you go to the next steps on our slide, Matt, you know, we finalize, you know, we, we produced the draft in July, we have to finalize the PER. Um, and then, you know, everybody else has to deal with the eligibility applications middle, which was already done. And then, um, you know, there's really no additional monitoring required. And then, uh, Sterling, you know, and then there's to do the financial application for the project. So that's a brief summary of the evaluation. And I can't see hands, but if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thanks, Russell. We're, uh, building questions right now. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Russell, this is Eric Cody. I just had a quick question, I hope. So from the cost benefit analysis, does that also take into account like running the system harder, faster at the 350 versus the 100? Like will we, will we potentially have less wear and tear on the system? Will it last longer when it comes from a maintenance type of situation?
So the short answer is we did look at also operating costs, it's not actually on this slide. Um, it, it's, well, water systems, I mean, in general, water systems, well, well, systems are designed to turn on and off because you have that big tank. So they're designed to be on and off. You like to run them a little longer because you're feeding chemicals and, you know, running six, eight, 10, 15 hours a day is standard for a water plant and you turn them off. So the wear and tear is not substantially different between 350 and the 100. Um, it's a little bit, you know, you know, and then you don't like to start and stop motors a lot and trying to keep consistent chemical feed, you know, for chemicals. It helps, especially when you have, in this case, you have a treatment plant. If you didn't have, if you weren't doing the filtration, it's sometimes easy just to, you can start and stop them. But the filtration, you look to kind of get it running so you can get into a routine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
What's the discharge rate on the backwash and how often? Uh, what's the discharge rate on the backwash and how often?
Um, the backwash, the back, the filters of backwash probably one day, day and a half. Um, and the rate is, I have to calculate the number in my head, but we backwash it about 15 gallons square foot. Um, I don't have the number of hand. I don't remember the number we used, um, but I can look that up. Or maybe Singh, you can look it up for me if you're online.
It would be, it would be like around the, it wouldn't be thousands. It would, it would be less, it'd be like 100 or less, right, Russell?
Well, it, it'll, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be a little bit more, but it's, it's a 15 minutes. Yeah, yeah, 100 gallons a minute, you know, it's a, but it's a, it's, it's probably closer to a couple hundred gallons a minute, but it's an instantaneous. The thing about backwash, that's why we have a backwash holding tank, is it's an instantaneous 15, 10, 15, 20 minute thing that happens at a high rate. And then we're going to go to the tank and that allows us then to equalize the backwash wherever we want to go when we need to. So we're not sending a high instantaneous rate out to the environment.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah.
Can we get a number on the gallon at some point for both of them?
We will, yeah. And we'll have, we'll have, um, all of the volumes more detailed just because of the previous design. You'll be able to um get better numbers or, or we can find better numbers for some of those flows, right, Russell?
Yeah, we have the number. I just don't have it at the top of my tongue right now.
That's fine.
It's in there. It should be in the P E R.
But overall, just to recap what he's saying, the backwash cycle does produce a lot of volume. But there's going to be another system in place so that it's not just taxing that wastewater system. It'll be held in, in a tank and then that way wastewater system's not just getting this couple hundred thousand gallons a minute off, off the bat.
So we're limited in gallons that we can send. We're also discussed with our provider in Plainfield.
Yeah.
What do they do? Are they going to have to treat the water? Once they get it, is that going to impact our cost on our waste?
Those are all questions that we have to address for sure. Uh, there's, there's a potential for that.
Because they can't just open it in the river and they.
Correct.
They're concerned about what the levels will be if you notice what we do.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, so, so, well, Matt, can I just jump in real quick? So, so the, the, the good, the good thing about iron and manganese in the backwash is that it will most, it will settle. So by letting it sitting in a tank, we'll be sending super nitrogen water, which really has not a lot of hot, not a lot of iron and manganese in it. And the solids we can take out. So there'll be some solids, um, but not as much. And then eventually you, you, you drain the sludge out of the tank. And then I could, that can be hauled off separately so that the wastewater plant doesn't get as high iron and manganese, which is useless to any kind of wastewater plant.
Good point, Russell. Thank you. Any other questions? So if there's no other questions for, for Russell on the PER, um, this is just kind of our next steps. And, and so there's no committal on the side of Sterling. All the committal's been from, you know, everything that you've heard and the people involved. And so we can continue that process and, and so it's still a lengthy process. It's not something that happens. And in a matter of weeks or months, um, we may not see anything happen for another year, maybe two. Um, but a lot of this process has to happen during that period of time. So we have to get into more project specs and designs. You got to get into bidding. Um, there's permits and approvals. Judy and I got to get into the financial assistance application. Um, Sterling has certain characteristics that it will be able to benefit from. Um, there's emerging change, emerging contaminant program. And so manganese is underneath that, so there might be additional considerations because Sterling is dealing with an emerging contaminant that's a priority underneath these funding mechanisms. Um, Sterling is also considered disadvantaged in some ways, you know, due to size and economy, different things. And so there's additional consideration when we're looking at financing with that respect. And so I'm hopeful that whatever cost that we're looking at will be knocked down. I don't, can't tell you how much, but I will work and help to that point. There's also other um ways of getting funding, you know, there's other avenues. And, and so we're going to be looking at other areas of grants, of other groups that might be offering different types of grants and subsidies as well, just to not look at one, uh, one stop shop. And we're going to be looking everywhere for, for the town of Sterling. Um, but, you know, the construction phase is a, a long ways away, but this is all part of that process. And um, there'll be enough time to really consider all these options as well as we move forward. But of course, there's always going to be public education and, you know, this is for the community, so it's important that all of you are involved in it. That's it. Just want to thank you for joining us. If you have any other questions, please hang out. But uh, appreciate everybody on the call as well.
Once this, if we have this type of system that I'm going to affect, what kind of manpower will it need weekly to do this?
Yeah, I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I do know the complexity of the system with some of the chemical injection, all that is probably already on the frequent side. I can't imagine it being more frequent than it already is.
White water's here three days a week, Monday, Wednesday.
White Water's here three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
I'm saying basically that's what they have been doing a week now. Is it going before that or?
I can't imagine it being more than that, or the filtration system that is, it's not more labor intensive for, for its process. Um, might be different frequencies that they have to do things as far as, you know, they might be able to still stick with three days. They might have to, um, change their schedule depending on maybe a backwash cycle or some other particular. But I can't imagine requiring them every day to, you know. But we'll, we'll wait for a standard operating procedure for the design and we can go from there. We definitely want to work with White Water, your operator, to make sure that that's something that's, um, affordable and something that's going to handle.
As you can see from what you've heard, the, um, there's a long way to go here. But definitely off to a very, very good start. We've accomplished a lot with all the help that we've gotten. We've accomplished an awful lot over the last, uh, twelve months. Um, no one is expecting, I hope no one has any expectation of this being done quickly because it isn't going to be done quickly, period. It's going to take a while. Uh, there's just an awful lot more to go. But as Matt indicated, we're going to seek, uh, funding sources from every available source that he could come up with, and they are numerous. We probably don't even know all of them at this point. We're hoping to investigate that to a point where we will get, we hope a hundred percent funding. But that's just a hope. We don't know that for sure. Um, we're not even going to speculate on that at this point. There's way too much to do for us to speculate on that sort of thing. But I, I can't say thank you enough to the folks that have spoken tonight and the folks that haven't because that's just a very small sampling of the people who've been involved. And Matt, again, has been a tremendous help to us. So once again, thank you. If any final question, be more than happy to try to answer that question, Frank.
I, I was like, I have a question about the different sources you, is a different well an option? I mean, we have property up in industrial park right next to the bank. We actually have an optioning system that's hardly flowing. It don't go nowhere other than to the river. Has that been investigated? Have we looked at alternative sources?
Be able to, you, you can do that. You'd be doing the same thing you're doing though. You could be dealing with the same water quality or worse. Um, probably not better considering the amount of private wells around and some of the things that we've heard about manganese and iron. Um, you're probably going to find another location with the same issue.
So we really don't know when this became a significant problem. Did people notice a change all of a sudden the water discolored or it was day one?
It's been years. Again, if you're looking through the minutes from W P C A and the, and the board selecting minutes, it's been discussed for many years.
Possibly because the tire burning plant left and you are using one way down.
That didn't help.
I mean, if there was any point that we could say, okay, this is why it got bad.
I, I don't know. I mean, even when the tire burning plant was fully operational, people were complaining about the, the quality of the water. It's not, it's not something that happened in twenty twenty. It's been ongoing. The, I think the losing the volume from the tire burning plant, um, that pushed less water through the whole system. So more sediment could build up. So when they do flush, it's like it, um, really riles up the, uh, sediment that's in the pipes. And then it does dead end in places. So it just kind of pushes the water there and it must push it back.
Yeah, water age.
Do we have any type of filter system in school? Because we don't notice anything there.
How much more of a footprint will it take on? Did they do what they do and don't build in or what they have to do? How much would it?
So much more space they're going to take up than.
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Um, I believe, so there's three buildings now. Um, conceptually, it could take up the, the area of those three buildings, but may not go past it. And it's not going to be like another building. It would take up that space.
How long would it be before we would know about?
Um, as far as, I mean, we just need the design.
Hey, Matt, Matt, we, we estimated we could stay within the existing fence line.
Existing fence line?
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, where, where the well, where the well is and the chemical feed system is right now, we're basically in that same space.
Of the, of the mounded area is what you're saying, Russell?
Yeah, of, 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 of the mounded, of the mounded area, correct.
Right. So that's the area that's above the flood plain and that's the important area that.
That is, that is, that is correct. That is correct.
We don't know the exact num- number, but it's going to be what.
I, uh, no, I was just wanting to think. I'm going to have to go more of a bomb because we, we're, we're looking at it. While I'm doing something with a wall field down there, you know, you don't want to spend money putting a.
Right.
Wall field in or whatever they're going to do down there and then find out two or three years from now that. Right, we're going to lose that. Yeah.
No, no, we plan on, we plan on staying on the mounded area by the wells and the chem- existing chemical feed system. So we weren't planning on going into other space.
Well, I give them a room, a room enough that when they put storage tank in.
The waste.
Waste.
So Russell, where do you think the waste tank would be fitted? It's, it's going to be closer to the road, you think? Like down the driveway or? The, for the backwash?
We were going to try to keep it all up in that area. And it's, and this is, this is, there's a schematic in the P R.
Okay. We can review the P R if you're curious. There's a schematic in there we can look at.
You have that with you?
Um, yeah, I have it on the computer. We have some printouts as well that we can show.
And that's going to require calling into the sewer, right?
Yep.
Can you comment more on the health concerns of high magnitude? You mentioned that it's over threshold in our courts that, like you said, certain demographics, children, infants and elderly people with certain, like, medical issues are more prone to being affected and have neuro- neurological effects from this. So can you comment more on that?
Yeah, I can't give you more detail. Um, we have guidance, um, that's from the state on, on how they view manganese and it has some of the E P language and some of what Connecticut, um, identifies. So that's above my pay grade to really communicate, you know, the, the specific health concerns of manganese. Uh, I don't.
They are significant though.
Right, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, there, there's some copies of, of the manganese fact sheet.
So it's basically more than just discoloration and, you know, athletics, it's actually a, a health concern for some population of Sterling.
Potentially, yeah. Like I used the example of salt, you know, for some populations, salt is very detrimental. And they need to look at their entire diet, you know, make sure. But for others, it's, it's not as noticeable. So it, it really determines, you know, um, per individual. And we talked about, you know, certain people that are more, you know, compromised with their nervous systems or. But, uh, yeah, I would check out the guidance. If you have any specific concerns, we can look for more help, you know, because it might be more of an individual concern than, than like a general population.
Judy, do you see the school was tied to that water system?
Yes.
Judy, just, I'm, uh, going back to your next steps for the F A A piece of, you know, I want to get ahead of ourselves with the construction and whatnot.
Right, right.
And not knowing what grants are out there. But are, are these grants going to be primarily focused for the construction? Or are they also going to be for the post-construction and maintenance?
It's design and construction. I don't know that there are grants for that. Then it really becomes the cost of operating system.
And hopefully to what we're currently budgeted, right? Hopefully. Okay, understood. Thank you. You guys did do a great presentation.
You did.
Thank you for all the information. And you guys, I know, have worked really hard.
Thank you.
And that, for me, layman who has not been a part of this, that is very beneficial. So thank you to everybody.
I wanted to be able to communicate this so that everybody has a chance to interact with it. So I appreciate that. Another question in the back?
I'm struggling with the math. So there's a hundred and seventeen meters, three hundred and eight users. Does that calculate the student population and the teacher population? I don't know.
No, they have the, I don't believe that.
The student population is greater than that.
Oh, right. No, that's the people that, you know, you, the people that, there's a lot of tenants. We actually, I don't know how many people live in the areas, but you've got, you know, a hundred and seventeen connections including, um, the industrial park. So that's an estimate on.
The average house, two point five.
Yeah.
So we're, we're talking not the probably six, seven hundred people.
When you bring in the school.
At a minimum.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Are there any more questions? Please feel free to ask if you think, if you can think of something. If not, I'm going to ask your motion to adjourn the meeting. What you made is sacred to adjourn all the papers? Meeting will adjourn. Thank you very much.